Good morning and welcome everyone. Today is December 30th, 2021. It's nine o'clock in the morning. I'd like to call this meeting as Logan County Commissioners to order. Please rise for Placely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We don't have any citizens that have registered to be heard this morning, so we'll move on to item four. Consideration and possible action on minutes of December 15th, 2021.
I'll move with approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve minutes and any further discussions. Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Item five. Consideration and possible action on final plat of Canyon Creek Phase Four.
Oh, that's me. I don't know why. I think it's just a few lots and maybe on Canyon Creek.
So what do we got going on?
Uh, just like nine lots at the end of a step or something to finish off. And then the next flat is the remainder.
So with your part of the world.
All county maintained.
The roads.
Uh, privately maintained.
They further certify that said streets designed or designated as private streets on said plat are not dedicated to the public as public streets and said streets be maintained by private property owners. Hey Damon?
Yes, sir.
When, uh, when they put on a plat that the roads are not dedicated to the public and are private streets?
Yes, sir.
How does that affect your police?
It definitely affects traffic enforcement. I mean, on a road that is open to the public, but a private road that has public access, we can do some traffic enforcement, but not much.
So, yeah, it says it will remain accessible to police fire.
Yeah.
What he's saying is he can't, they can't, the way that's worded, they can't enforce speed limits.
How do you want it to be worded?
That's why I brought it up.
Because we changed this verbiage because you asked that several years ago.
Right, whether it was to say that the county wasn't responsible for maintaining the streets.
There's no way for it to not be private and not the county.
Well, it is. So the streets are public streets, but privately maintained.
I think what he's trying to say is if y'all put up a speed limit sign and no one's abandoning law, you call the sheriff, he can't come in and write a ticket on that because it's a private road. You can have a public road that's maintained by the homeowners.
It's a publicly accessible road privately maintained.
But if you don't, he just trying to point out that they can't enforce the law on the streets in there because they're.
I mean, I'm good, I'm good with it because it takes the county out of maintaining the streets, right? The way it's written today. But the way it's written today, it's so detailed that when you say private streets, private, you know, not, not for public access, then it restricts the law enforcement.
Is this gonna be a gated community or anything?
No, this is, the community already has three phases. This is just nine lots at the end of a road that's already there.
I would mean, I don't.
But these two have the same verbiage.
Well, the thing is, is, is we're gonna patrol them, we're gonna do everything like we typically would, like a, like a commissioner. Uh, we got a good one pointed out is we're limited as to some citations we can write because it is a private road. We'll still make some traffic stops, do what we can, but as far as enforcing stop signs that are privately put up and stuff like that, we don't have any jurisdiction.
We, we should really come up with some standard.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why, that's why when I read that, that's what I remember. Because the sheriff and I've had discussions.
And there's a lot of additions in our county that are this way.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it if you're, if you're good with it, young lady.
I'm good with it. Well, this is already in the, well, Stratus neighborhood, so.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve for phase four, which I don't have anything against the way it's written either.
Yeah, I think that maybe what I should do is just like get your card or something?
Sure.
And then like we can come up with a.
Well, and if I made a meeting that you, I and all of Randy, as we have to make sure that it's like this, that they can in turn prosecute.
Yeah, because we want, because we already have problems with gunfire and we can't do it.
Gunfire is a completely different, a completely different statute.
We could have one of our commissioners sit in on that as well to talk about the streets. You know, the, so there's a couple of legal issues that we want to make sure that we, we cover and make sure that the verbiage is correct and proper for everybody, right?
Yeah, then we'll put it on.
Yes, ma'am. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved of the final plat of Canyon Creek. So now we get to do the signature thing. Where are? Oh, I see. I see.
I think what some of the divisions are doing are dedicating them to public streets, but privately maintained. That's the verbiage on a lot of them.
Yeah, where it says here, the plat are not dedicated to public streets. That's, that's the key piece that restricts his ability, the police, to write citations for speed limits.
You can dedicate them to the public.
It's confusing, isn't it? It's kind of like slugging beer under the bar or anything like this kind of.
You done that before, haven't you?
No, no, I seen it on TV once.
Anything that is, we've had a couple of divisions that were supposed to be dedicated and these didn't.
Well, what's the, I mean, what does, what does public streets do if they're privately maintained? This aren't ten, but I think, because they're still.
Then there's no question about law enforcement or AMTs or AMAs.
The homeowners are still managing or maintaining it, so it's like the same thing.
Well, my, my question, I guess, to the.
Take your side.
The commissioners, if y'all, if you guys could contract with the developer to order to put up traffic devices, you know, like a, you know, a stop sign, speed limit signs, I don't know if.
It's, you're not.
Then it's an official, it's an official sign, but I don't know if you could do that.
So we, we normally don't furnish traffic control.
That's what I'm saying.
Inside of the housing addition, it's not something that we do. We, we will furnish traffic control at, or ingress and ingress onto county, onto the county roads from them, but.
Marvin, how would that work on a public utility? I mean, like phone lines? Could they go down a private, you know, that's, they would have to go to the association not being a public ride.
The HOA, yeah. Yeah, or developers, depending on where they're at in the process. Cause the developer has it before, but they turn it over to that HOA.
Hey, we're good with it. Just don't expect the sheriff to come and do a whole.
I, I don't want that, you know, like where they're. They're like, he can't see, he can't come in there.
There's things we can do to try to make it a second amendment, and we will do everything we can to ensure it is, you know, stop sticks and stuff like that. Well, just water.
We got two more coming, so.
Bless you.
Thank you.
So before we get into item six, a quick question. How would they need to bring all of their plats back to have that wording modified?
Well, we wouldn't be able to because they're, they would be already sold, so we would, we would only be able to change it outside our untold.
Right. Okay. All right, answer my question. Thank you. All right, item six, consideration, possible action on final plat of Buck Crossing Phase One.
This is one of the same property as this.
Same wording on there with the.
Yeah, same wording.
I'll move with approval. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
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 A motion is approved unanimously.
The plat, the only thing that other than street, could be amended, see if they're.
Maybe.
Where's this addition located?
Cause see, once you do the plat in the incorporated area, in the operation.
County area of court.
Forest Hills between Pine and Suzer.
Okay. Where is this comes from? Where is that?
It's Canyon Creek.
Canyon Creek addition right there on the west side of.
Buck, Buck Crossing.
It's just outside of Canyon Creek.
That's all it is.
Like, do they get land outside of there?
So back to this, they owe me one, they owe me one script. They owe me, they owe me one like this with the script professionally, that, that one, I did that myself. I did that myself. All right, have we taken that item six for vote yet?
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
All right, so item seven. Consideration, possible action on final plat of Buck Crossing Phase Two.
If it's got the same verb, then I'll move with it.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the plat for Buck Crossing Phase Two. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Are these already sold or? I'm sure they will be soon.
Yes, basically.
Can't sell them like this if changes the label.
Completed is, is good because there's not a lot of real estate for sale right now. Everything gets modded. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I have to get the chair built up.
Okay, I'm rolling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank y'all.
All right, move on to item eight. Consideration and possible action on resolution establishing a countywide burn ban until Friday, January 14th, 2022. Stephen, I understand that there may be some information that we were unaware of when we took this up. However, I've also become aware that possibly the city of Guthrie just passed a burn ban.
Yeah.
Last couple of days, so.
Yeah, the city's.
Please help us with that.
Yeah, the city's different on the county. For county commissioners to establish a countywide burn ban, we gotta be in either a severe or extreme drought designated by the forestry department. We're only gonna moderate drought, so we can't do one yet. Even though the fire chiefs, that we did, the majority of them wanted one, so whenever the next forestry deal comes out, we might be able to do one.
So what's the Department of Forestry gonna do if we say we're gonna put one in place anyway? Because I've got a really, I've kind of got a little bit of a problem with the federal agency telling the county what we can do and what we can't do.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, I really do.
Yeah, I don't know what the.
It's not, it's not a state agency, right? It's not, they don't report to the governor. They, it, it has nothing to do with common sense on, on what we should do for the protection of the people in our, in our county, for the public's protection. And just because the forestry service decides not to include Logan County in whatever they decide that, you know, makes that, that mark on the wall to declare a burn ban, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure I'm in agreement with that.
The people ought to have enough common sense, not the litifar anymore. Whether we have the forestry department or the board of county commissioners deciding.
I think, I think our brothers in law enforcement would wanna take issue with the common sense part of that sometimes. People do some weird things. But anyway, um, it doesn't appear that by, um.
Well, we got a quarter inch rain the other night, so didn't that take us out of it?
Well, they, we, we did get some rain.
Yeah, we did.
So.
The likelihood of fires not, not there was great as it was when we first talked about this, bringing this up, but.
And fifty percent chance of rain tomorrow. Doesn't it say somewhere in there that criteria you gotta meet?
Yeah.
If there's a chance of raining in there, you can't do it.
Yeah.
It's pretty in-depth.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's hard to get there.
Yeah.
So no action on the burn ban?
I, I think so. I think so for right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I can, if you want, I can forward the statute to you guys if you want.
Thank you.
Okay. But I'm still not in favor of a federal agency telling this law to be in Logan County. That's, I'll always be stuck there.
I am restricted.
All right, so no action on item eight. Item nine. Consideration and possible action on service agreement with Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation for offender information systems for sheriff's office.
Uh, this is a system we've been using for, I don't know, probably ten, fifteen years. Uh, it's time to upgrade our server. Uh, we don't typically sign a year-to-year deal. It's, um, I don't think we have a month of contract with them. It's until, uh, till, till either party decides to get out of it. Uh, this is basically the software that operates our jail software, our report writing software, our dispatch software, and it's, our current server has exceeded its lifespan and it's time to replace it. And for us to, to get a new server from the OSBI we have to integrate into an agreement, that's all we're asking for. Be able to purchase that.
Okay. The, the gentlemen, the agreement has just one signature on here.
What's the dollar now?
Uh, thirty-eight hundred.
You don't want a.
Three thousand or something like that.
Look at. Look at any of that, but it's something we've been using forever.
Yeah, there's a.
Otis system?
Yeah, District Three's on paper.
Cool.
Well, I'll make the motion with approval.
Forty-two hundred, I'm sorry. I thought it was thirty-eight hundred.
How much was it?
Forty-two hundred.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second on the service agreement with OSBI. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
This section's mine too, so I'll just stay here.
You know, Monty. Okay, item ten. Consideration, possible action on interlocal agreement with Canadian County Board of Commissioners and Canadian County Sheriff for housing of Canadian County inmates in Logan County Jail.
You know, Canadian, as we know, the, the growth of our state, Canadian County is one of those that's, that's growing faster than any keep up. And they're currently housing inmates in probably five or six jails. One is up in Ellis County, which is quite a ways away. They've approached us and said, hey, would you guys be interested in housing some of our inmates? Uh, it's closer, and I told them, I wanna look into it. We've got, uh, we've got a little bit of room. And, uh, we spoke to them about what it would cost for us to house those inmates. And it's gonna be up to ultimately to, to you guys as well as their board to decide whether or not they wanna pay it. I know, I was talking to the sheriff in, in Ellis County, and he says that they're paying eighteen dollars a day. And I said, well, it's, if I'm at least breaking even, I'm gonna do it. So, uh, you've got the agreement before you, and as you can see, all the transportation and everything, it all falls on them. We're just basically the.
How many federal, we still got federal inmates?
We do have federal inmates. Uh, that population has dwindled to about half.
So would, would this affect the feds?
Not at all.
So, I mean, could you actually make a little amount off the feds?
Correct, and we've got this set up based on our, our estimated daily cost. We're making about four dollars above what we would typically break even at, so we've included a little bit extra of that.
I think it works pretty good on that.
Well, the law has reviewed it and he's okay with the two, so, with the verbiage.
So they're thinking forty-one inmates a day?
Yeah, like I said, we've averaged through a matrix that, that our association rated on average cost a day. I think it, average cost a day for us is thirty-seven dollars an inmate is what it costs us to, to house, feed, pay electric bill per inmate.
The only thing I didn't see in there, what about medical, I think that medical tolls fall on them or?
Uh, it actually falls on the inmate, as far as if we've got an inmate in our jail, be it federal, be it Christian or whatever, it's our responsibility to take them to the medical. Now, if, if, depending on what it is, it, it falls back on them for paying it if, unless it's something that happens in our facility.
Say, at the end of the day, we're liable. Do you get with it?
I'm good with it. I mean, we're, you know, I don't think we're gonna get that many just for the simple fact that got, you know, we're on the higher end of what they're being charged, and it's kind of one of those deals I look at, you know, if we can help them, great, but we're gonna help ourselves too a little bit on the deal.
Sure. And, and they are the fastest growing Canadian state of Oklahoma. We're the third fastest in South County and.
Yeah, and, and, you know, depending on what happens with, with us the next year or two, we, we may be looking for jails to house inmates too. You know, you're not to rate, we're gone. Our, our inmate numbers are creeping up. I think we're about a hundred and sixty, sixty-five a day. The most we've been since I've been sheriff was two fifteen. The lowest we've been, I think, was one twenty-five, one thirty.
I like that number.
I like that number too.
So do you know if they contract with Kingfisher County as well?
I don't know if they do or not.
Didn't they build a new jail in Kingfisher?
Yeah, they did build a new jail. I don't know that they're entering into any agreements with anybody. If you're okay with it, I'll move with it, with approval.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second to enter into an interlocal agreement with Canadian County Board of Commissioners and the Canadian County Sheriff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, gentlemen.
Thank you, Damon.
You bet. I'm gonna see what they're gonna do to you and the treasurer up to.
Actually, it's because of the sheriff.
Ooh, okay. So we'll move on to item eleven. Consideration and possible action to authorize the county clerk and county treasurer to open an estray?
Uh huh.
Fund.
Well, I gotta know what's estray fund.
Charter of account.
The stray. The stray. Yeah, the sheriff, I can see what that is.
Estray sheriff? So the sheriff is stray. So it's a charter of accounts pursuant to statute for section eighty-five dot six.
Okay.
What, I guess what we're asking is what?
So first off, the statutes require that to open a fund, a new fund, and we have to have board approval. We don't currently have estray as an open fund, so that's why it's here. Subaccounts will just happen to create the fund, we have to have board approval. The estray account is the sheriff gets called to pick up estray animals. Horses, cows, goats, sheep, whatever. Statutes require if they can't immediately find or locate the owner, they have to house and care for the animal for a period of time and advertise for that animal. And if after a period of time, no one's claimed it, then they have to sell it. So what happens is then, because of the charter accounts and the way the statutes write, things have changed from the way we used to do this, and we, we did so few and now they're getting more and more. But it's being dictated as what we do with the money. So we have to deposit the sale proceeds for these animals into this estray fund. From there, we can reimburse the sheriff the actual cost that he paid to house and maintain those animals through that period of time. The statute reads that anything left in that account after one year defaults to county general fund.
Uh huh.
So.
Which we don't make any money.
Yeah, so, so there's some questions, um, under Sheriff Dykes and I went back and forth with, because this is kind of a new way, and we still have some questions on the money distribution, but we know we have to be able, and I've got three chats waiting, to start it by creating this fund to start working from.
Could we make more money if we had a barbecue?
Not by statute, no. We would be barbecued.
Okay, well, so, uh, that, that makes more sense now why we've got this on the agenda, so thank you for the explanation. Any discussion in the board?
I have none. I'll move with approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, item twelve. Consideration and possible action on acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claim for Brad Lambert and forward to Echo County Claims. So this is already at Echo again. And this is in my district, so I'm gonna make a comment or two here. We, this was an accident where there was supposedly a stop sign missing and somebody ran into him. And so now they're filing claims against the county for failure to maintain traffic control. We didn't know anything about it, about the stop sign being down. So. So, I don't know how this is going to be handled, but is there, is there a way that we can... And I know that Highway Patrol handles a lot of those accident investigations, all of them, right?
Correct.
They don't contact us over stuff like this.
Well, I mean, I would say ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the time, we have a deputy on scene before OHP gets there.
Right.
I don't know this specific situation or if attempts were made to contact. I don't have any, this is the first time hearing about it.
Yeah, you and I are in the same boat, because when I saw this claim, that was the first I'd heard about it. So, you know, I'm...
You give me a date, and I'm all up for you to see.
We'll get you a copy of the claim notice here. I appreciate any follow-up on that. This and some other liability issues I'd like to chat about one of these days.
Sure.
Because, to be quite honest with you, going through true pay to get information is sometimes a challenge for us individually. It is. I think law enforcement, the law enforcement may be a little bit quicker. I don't know. But anyway. So here's the notice of tort claim. It's quite, quite a lot what they're asking for again. We weren't notified that any stop sign was down. Once we found out it was down, we went out and immediately put it back up.
Well, I'd make a motion that we send it on to...
Acknowledge.
Acknowledge.
Receive.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second to acknowledge receipt of the notice of tort claim. Any further discussion?
I guess our attorneys will handle it for us.
Yes, they will. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Something completely different, as they say on Monty Pies on them. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action on adopting an official county seal. See how that works, official county seal, that's the right. So, I've got two... I've got two different things for us to look at, seals to look at. They still owe me a third one back. So, and that's the one with the script we talked about earlier. They didn't give me one of those. But I shall have one later. So I guess what I'm asking is, first, look at these. If there's one of these that Jeff brought out at you as something that you think we need to do right today, I'm good with that too. But... I do too. That one's not on the list.
And official seal could go here if we have to have it.
There you go. And you're going to take that action to figure that out? If we have to have official seal put on it?
Yeah, with that, I would, I mean...
But that would only be, wouldn't that only be on your stamp that you use as the...
Well, I'm not the only one that uses stamps, though. So does the court, so does the treasurer.
That's what I'm getting at, I guess.
So, yeah, I mean, if you all want to just look at these and then table for more information, we can do that. It didn't bother me till this morning.
Anybody else want to look at what we're looking at?
So these, this, everything's the same.
But, wow, please ponder that one.
Yeah, well, so this one... This is one that I hand drew, right?
Unlike the front page and the script.
And so we've got, this is the one that, hey, fellas, if you want to look at this. This has got this script that we've got over there on the wall. So, this, they've, the designers here have promised me a design with the script in it instead of these block letters, like this, yeah.
I like this one.
Right?
I think across the board, that rope is...
I, oh, you like that tighter rope, the bigger tighter rope? Okay, I will, I will pass that along. So if we can get that script with that rope edge like that. So now, let me ask you a question. If we were going to put some color in this, the rope and the wheat chap, or the wheat heads would be golden?
Yes.
And then what?
Well, I don't know. I don't know what color it is.
But you wanted red, white, and blue before.
You put a flag in there somewhere.
Could they get us one in color so we could compare it?
Well, so the black and white one would be for the stamp, right?
Yeah. Can I ask one more?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Could your designer shrink that down to the size of my small stamp so we can see how that would look? Because even when it's stamped on my filings, it's smaller than even the cell I'm using. I just like to make sure that it will shrink down in proportion properly.
It will, because we're going to be getting a vector file.
It'll look the same.
You don't see my concern. I don't know anything about...
You know vector, you know what the vector file is.
Off control, aye, yeah.
Yeah, but if you've got a vector file, it'll shrink down with the same detail. As a matter of fact, you can blow it up to, you know...
The biggest concern is blowing it up.
Ten by ten. Yeah, exactly.
Because on my labels, it's literally like a half an inch by a half an inch.
Right.
And the one I use in here is an inch.
So what I'm hearing from the board is, y'all like this design best so far? She wants to make, we need to make sure that somewhere it doesn't have to say official seal. But I think if we as a board adopt this as our official seal, then it's in the...
I may have to add it on mine.
Yes, because you're special.
The court too, though. We started by...
Okay, so gold, we could use braincore colors, you know, gold and red. I mean, in my, just trying to get this...
OD green.
Right? See, look, that Cub's look, see, he's got, there's a blue on the outside circle, and then this red on the inside. I don't know.
And then a white star.
Any recommendations from the...
My wife picks all the colors in my house. A smart man. Black and white's fine with me.
Steve, anything from you? You're a lot of help. What? Come on, help me out, guys. So to colorize it, we just leave everything else black and the gold wheat heads and the gold rope? Hello?
Yeah, I sent it to my wife and asked her what color. Kind of like, dang, I don't do colors.
I don't know any custom color.
Well, it doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be. But there are a few that are, not all of them, but a few of them. Okay, so, right now, our... We're, I will, once the script comes out, I will send that out for you guys to look at. This is the rope edge that they've come up with, right? And so I need to ask them to make the rope edge a little more bolder, like this one? Okay.
Just the font.
Like Crest.
Like Crest.
I like this font a lot better than the block.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we all agree that's kind of our standard. Yes, absolutely. So we'll, we'll do that. And I still have this. I can handle it. But the rope's kind of frayed on this side, so I don't know. Anyway, I'll get into work on it. Maybe have something back by our meeting next week. And possibly we can adopt a seal at that time. Do you think you might have an answer about the officials?
I will try, but we need to shoot for the fifteenth because I can't adjust the agenda for Monday.
I'd say leave it black and white, though.
Okay.
I think that looks pretty good.
Yep.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm, that's, I mean, it's our deal.
Yeah, I like it the way it is.
Okay, that's two-thirds anyway, right there.
I know. Whatever.
No, I'm just, I'm for whatever you guys want to do. I just want to get one, you know, put in place, share with the county. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll, no action this until the fifteenth? Okay.
How fast time that we have to do this?
Aye. Okay.
None on fourteen and fifteen.
Okay, we have none on fourteen or fifteen. Item sixteen, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
She throwing stuff now?
She is. While we're doing this, I've got another question for you. Since you and I are on the ARCA committee there. I've heard rumor that other counties have decided that they can give their employees that have been with them through thick and thin during the COVID crisis stuck here and did their jobs. A bonus.
It's called premium pay. There are some restrictions. It's one, when this all first started, I brought to your attention. So it can increase, they use it, look at it by the hour, but it is, can only apply to employees that stayed on the job and not worked from home in a parameter. And it's, yes, and I've heard one county for sure it's already implemented. It could add a twelve month, if you want it to go that way. When I could move around and, you know, I kind of thought, well, I earned one to twelve months, that's six grand. It's called premium pay under the order.
So I've heard the maximum is like ten thousand?
I've heard it's actually more than that, but I don't know. Because it was, the way it was ordered, it was you could give an additional so much per hour. I believe is the way they had it calculated.
So how many employees would we have approximately that would qualify for something like that?
I would have to go back and, I don't remember the timeframe that this can afford. So we would have to narrow it, and then I think the parameters would be who worked full, the full, let's say, twelve months, or there was someone that was only here six months, or... I do know at the last, I believe it was that CODA meeting, SA and I was talking about the one county that had already fully implemented. And because of those things where you're dealing with people that came in, landed, retired, so they developed a procedure that already, and I can ask to see theirs, that limited it to those that were still employed and were employed for a hundred percent of that time period. I believe is what was that.
They got real hairy trying to figure out the back pay of those that are gone.
And so they did not do that. And I can fit, I believe it's commandant county. And so I can reach out to Kerry and see if I can get what they wrote up.
So, would that cause more problems than benefits for trying to figure out who did and who didn't? And if we give funds to one group and not to others, but, I mean... I know this isn't on our agenda, I just...
Well, I mean, when you get into if those that have left since then, I don't know, you know, if we're supposed to compensate them or what's up to the county.
I think that's kind of what they were alluding to. There was, so they created this policy. I said, I'll reach out to Kerry, see if I can get a copy of what they did.
Yeah. I'd say it'd be more of an issue on Troy's end to try to figure all that stuff out. And you got, like Steve was saying, those that came maybe right after that, that aren't going to be compensated that, I mean...
I think if we can do it, we should do it. Time frame that's in the act is when it can apply.
What was that name?
I said, the end of the day, the questions I get asked is, hey, these counties are doing that. How come ours isn't? How come we're not getting...
Well, it sounds like County P has done that.
There's been a few counties that have done it.
Okay.
And it may just be the one that everybody's talking about. So that's possibility, but...
One seventy-seven. But I, those are questions that we need to answer for our employees, and I'm willing to help with it. Along those lines, we've asked the federal judiciary when they're going to have the rules finalized for the use of those funds. And they don't have an answer for us yet. Slew it.
That was the other thing that was at the CODA meeting. SA and I did reflect that there is new legislation working its way through Congress that would greatly change the way that we could use that money. They're hoping to have an answer on that after the first of the year. But it would greatly impact what counties can do with that money, so...
Have we drawn that money yet?
No, we have not.
Could we not be drawing interest on that money if we did?
Yes, that was finally clarified that the money can be placed in an interest-bearing account and the county can maintain or retain the interest to use at its desire. There's no strings on the interest. Under the ARCA Act, we have until December of twenty-four to have funds encumbered and twenty-six to have it fully expended.
That sounds like a no-brainer on going to interest if there's no strings attached to it.
Yeah, we'll, we're going to have a meeting after the first of the year to see about doing just that. One of the things, though, I do want to wait on before making a recommendation to the board on how we should spend that money, is I do want to wait on the rules to be finalized on what we'd use it for.
I understand that.
SA and I pointed out that a lot of assumptions have been made as to what it could be used for, and they're finding out now that it's not going to connect. So until we get finalized, it's... Okay, for my kids, I have the actual, this is the printout. If you want to see the actual claims, they're all listed here. We did not have any transcript.
Another transcript, okay. Oh, and by the way, Steve has told me that best guess... Oh, and by the way, Steve has told me that best guess on us getting our payment money will be at the fifteenth, maybe?
You add this, cut the checks on the first and the fifteenth.
It comes in and it'll be kept away.
Unless we have a special meeting.
Not just for you, for the excise board.
Yeah, that's what I said, for the excise board, have a special meeting.
Well, no, because Sherry has to run an reimbursement program.
And that can be done.
Does that ever consent to that?
No, 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 no. Election board claim, which is just the chairman and then alcohol and beverage stuff.
So you say the first February, what does that actually mean? Like the eighth?
Like the, the first Tuesday.
First Tuesday.
When the FASC report meets. Providing it's been deposited by the last day of January.
Does anybody else need?
No, just me.
State election board, four thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and eighty, or ninety-eight cents. What is this?
That's what we get reimbursed for the salary of the election board secretary.
They go to the district point, right?
Yes, sir.
It's what the state still says, or the county still says.
That's what, yeah. Work with me on this. Okay. Alcohol consumption, one of the things you're most interested in. Is it Guthrie?
Twenty-one, total twenty-one, three?
Eighteen, eight.
For Guthrie.
For Guthrie. Twenty-six, five, ooh, total.
Good luck.
Yeah.
New Year's is coming, right?
And that concludes consent.
New Year's will be in March. Troy runs two months behind on her reports.
Who is she operating?
Senior rally.
Keep going and I'll go.
The state does.
She keeps blipping that on the excise board, though.
Well, the senior rallies are there.
Oh, they're so often. They do their, their part to hold up their end, you know.
You realize this has become an excise board thing.
All right, that concludes consent, gentlemen.
I move with approval of consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on consent. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item seventeen, consideration possible action on claims for payment for December. There's a claim, holy, it's not an allegations. Here, right?
Yes. Some of them, it's just there's a lot of invoices, so it, they did it.
That's fair enough. What's part of the place? You have another place?
Actually, I do. And hopefully soon enough, I'll use the sheriff's new building.
A purchasing class?
For the party department. Okay. It's my class, it's not SA's. This is a third class.
There's one from McLean State. Word class has got more punch to it. You ended the purchasing class, sort of your commissioners, education.
Yes.
That's a decent one.
Yes, it was. A lot of slide shows.
Yeah. Did nobody teach that one?
Yes.
He did, yeah.
Him and, another lady.
Sherry Schiffer.
Yes.
She has now retired.
She ended up sneezing in her face shield, so the whole rest of the class, she had a sneeze in her case.
Let's work. Protect this country.
She's now doing consulting work on, still working on a lot on the training stuff, but she's working with the state.
Damon, do you have a county bullpen in District One, Two, and Three for all your, for your livestock? Or are you holding?
We contract with.
I don't understand.
Would they like to set up?
Does he go out and take them in?
They go out.
You want to do that with English today?
Well, they, they go out and get them. I don't know what to do.
When Monty's caught up, they make a motion to approve claims. They're going to be on second go to line.
I have a motion and a second to approve claims. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item eighteen, consideration possible action on purchase card payments for December twenty-twenty-one. Total five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. In cartridges, no weapons in the courthouse signs. Amazon order, or probably District One, if I remember right. Radio belt clips, and little things like that.
I'll move with approval.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Pete, clerk, payment. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen, comments, announcements, questions by Board of County Commissioners or other officers and department heads. Steven.
During the meeting, I did receive a deal that said that we are in a, they updated it, and we are in a moderate, or a severe drought now. So, but I don't know if we can go back on that.
Was that because of the live streaming, that they were like itching behind their ears?
It happened after I got done and I sat back down, I don't know. But we do meet the requirements now, so.
Even with the fifty percent chance of rain in normal?
Yeah, this came out this morning at nine, nine fifteen.
I don't care what they say, I'm just saying, we've got a criteria we've got to meet, that we meet all criteria.
Yeah, we meet the criteria now.
Including the number of fires that we've had so far.
Yeah. The federal government tells us, I figure the county government.
I just wonder if they're going to come out and fight the fires when they happen.
Someone asked to enforce it or to move the fire department to go hide the fire.
Yeah. So with, with that information, I'd like to go back and at least redress that with the board.
I sent the picture and the, maybe to your.
Okay, thank you, sir. So.
I need.
Item eight, oh, yeah, okay. Consideration of possible action on resolution establishing a countywide burn ban until Friday, fourteenth, January twenty-twenty-two. We've had, what was the vote of the fire chiefs?
It was, we had over the majority, I believe it was eight of them that, eight out of the ten that were polled said they were in favor of it, so.
Right.
We did our majority of the.
It was thirteen fire departments, so we didn't poll them all.
Well, just the ones that voted.
Probably the ones that showed up to the chief's meeting.
Well, no, we use a app and send it out to all of them, and they vote yes or no.
So I've been in contact with our fire departments down in my part of the world, and third in favor of one down there. They also understand that, you know, some of the rural areas where we've got, you know, a lot of farmers and ranchers, it does restrict their ability to, to burn debris. But down in South County, it is a problem for us. So I would, I would ask that we at least consider it until the fourteenth.
You know, burning debris is one thing, I mean, I don't think anybody ought to be burning debris, but what about the welders and everyone trying to make a living? The green claws in there.
The exceptions are welding, cutting torches.
Dude, you want to look at this?
Yeah.
Except for Monty, it says you can't do it, though.
Thank you. Then we get on.
We are going through one of the, one of the driest periods we've had in a while. And I know we're getting a little raining and we've gotten relieved, but it's fairly, as you know, Monty, it's fairly knocked the dust down on some of the roads that we've had.
Yes.
So you can still burn your fields and stuff like that, you just got to follow up on forestry. Burn plans.
Who is the forester?
Federal Department of Forestry, yes.
Do you have to be vaccinated to burn your field?
I love that question. We need to clarify that, yes, you rub it. Probably need to wear a burner mask.
Lots of plastic.
Oh, yeah? Styrofoam. So like I said, I've, I've had our fire departments down in South County who asked to do this. But I will ask for action on this. As the chairman, I'm not going to, I'm not going to jump out there first. I think I would tell you I would support it, but I'm not going to jump out there first.
As vice chairman, I'm not going to jump out there first either. I'm just.
Monty, did they say how much rain is expected?
I, I did not say that.
That's what I'm looking at, is future rainfall. There's a lot of people that are still burning debris out of their yards and stuff like that, and I know it's, it's a hazard.
Number two says no more than one-half inch of precipitation forecast for next three days.
Yeah, I did not, I, this ain't fifty percent rain. I was excited to see that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not totally against it.
I move with approval, and I'll second your motion. All right. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Once that go till Monty?
Fourteenth.
Our next meeting.
Right.
Effective immediately?
Yes, sir. Soon as she gets the resolution, I'm going to put on it. There you go, gentlemen. All right, thank you, Steve, appreciate the update. All right, back to comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners or other county officers, department heads. Sure? I think I've spoken enough. You've done a good job, sir. Thank you. Out of purr?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Monty?
I guess I could comment on this burn ban. I mean, I really don't like the government telling people what they can do and what they can't do, but I do feel that we ought to be in ones.
Right, right.
Or at least people use good tone and sense one.
But sometimes we need to help with the common sense. That's all we got.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm kind of in the same shoe Monty's in. Other than that, the only other thing that we've, we've discussed in the past about some of the inspections that we do, and I know we've discussed inspecting the fairgrounds, and I, I don't know if we can discuss that or if we can get that put on a, to agendize on the meeting for maybe the fifteenth.
It'll be the fourteenth.
It'll be the fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So I, I think you're, you're right, we have discussed it in the past, but we've never officially taken an action on it because it hasn't been officially agendized yet to do that. And maybe, in my hearing from the board, that we want to do that on, on the fourteenth?
I'm not opposed.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, because we need to.
But do we want to stretch that to all county buildings instead of just, just the fairgrounds?
Well, Monty can go look at the election board building.
No, it's in my district.
Indeed, indeed. Now, whatever you guys want to do, I mean, we, so if you do that, are we going to be inspecting each other's barns? What, what, where are we going to draw the line on that?
I mean, really, the only other building would be the courthouse, I mean, that.
Right.
Yeah, we probably ought to do a walk-through one.
Could I make that suggestion?
Of course, ma'am.
Well, I understand doing that, and that's fine. It still has to be done as an open meeting. So I would suggest maybe break up and do one-one meeting and one the next, rather than trying to move whatever people may or may not want to all at one time around town. So if you did the fairgrounds on the fourteenth, you could do the courthouse on the thirtieth, or, you know, whatever.
And we're going to vote on whether or not to do it on the fourteenth. We have, we have a selected date time.
Okay, so that's how you want that agenda? Okay.
Right, well, I mean, unless we take an official action, it's not, I mean.
Well, I mean, you could say as an agenda item, consider a simple action to go do this.
Yes, that's what I'm talking, yes.
Not establish a date for it, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Well, I think we would do that at the same time.
Okay.
I think.
So my thinking on the inspection of the fairgrounds, I mean, we've put a lot of money in the fairgrounds and, and there's no one elected official down there at any given time. I just thought it would be wise to go buy them the, our investments have been. I agree, not necessarily coming and looking at Cody's barn or your barn, or just.
Right.
Go, go see what some of our taxpayers' money has went toward.
I, I agree.
So I wasn't thinking about all county buildings as that facility.
Okay.
But we can move all of them.
But that, we agendize that for the fourteenth for the fairgrounds.
To do the actual inspection?
To vote on whether or not to do an inspection of the fairgrounds and determine a date time annually for certain inspection. I think. Okay. And with that, that's all I have, other than, this is my last meeting as chairman, thank y'all. Item twenty, consideration possible action on adjournment.
I'll move with adjournment.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.